Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to our 28th of October City Council meeting. It's amazing when you announce you're having wine tasting after the meeting, how many people show up.
Oh, my God.
Okay, my bad.
I'm sorry.
At this time, if you would please, follow my example and use your microphones and turn down all your electronic devices, please. Very good, very good. We do have a couple of lists to sign up to speak on anything on the agenda this evening, and I had them up here already, but if you decide you want to speak and you haven't signed up, too bad. No, just kidding. If you want to speak, let me know and I'll go ahead and let you sign up afterwards. We're not going to deny anybody from speaking. Now, we always begin our meetings with an invocation, and for some reason you don't want to participate, that's fine. Go ahead and step out of the room, and after the invocation, come back into the room. This time, I'm going to call on Reverend Michael Legonis from the LifePoint Church. And Reverend, at the invocation, would you lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance also?
Sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Everybody go ahead and bow to your heads with me, please. Wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you. On behalf of all of us gathered here today, thank you for all the ways you bless our lives, for your presence here today with us. Thank you for the ability we have to come together and for allowing us to carry the responsibilities that we do. Thank you for loving us and for giving us your grace. In the Bible, you said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, Lord, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern the issues at hand. Give them a sense of welfare and the true needs of your people. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even if there is disagreement in the room, and grant them peace in their lives and joy in the task at hand. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please, give them an assurance and give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and around our beloved city of Crestview. We love you, Lord. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. The meeting is now officially open, and we have one council member absent. Councilwoman Brown is not with us this evening, excused absence, so we do have a quorum. And having said that, are there any objections to our agenda? Seeing none, our agenda is accepted by unanimous approval. Moving on, we have no special presentations this evening, and no special reports and presentations. So at this time, I would ask if there are any objections to the August 26 City Council minutes. Seeing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. We have no public hearing this evening. Now, here's what we do have: Public opportunity on council proposals or propositions. Now, we have two very important items on tonight's agenda, so we're going to do this a little bit differently. One is a proposal to amend the alcohol ordinance, and the other proposal to examine the possible purchase of a recreation center. To align the remarks properly, what we're going to do is after each presentation by our staff, we will allow any individual who's signed up to come up and speak at that time. Okay? So instead of having anybody now speaking before you even have the presentations, after we've had a presentation on the alcohol ordinance, then I will give the public an opportunity to come up and speak if you've signed up, and if you haven't, then come on up here and sign up before that time. But also, if you did sign up and someone has already made your point, feel free to stand up and waive your time, your three minutes, that's all you're going to get anyway. You can waive that time and say, "My point's been made. I waived my time, and I'm in support or opposition to the proposal in front of the City Council." That will just make things go a little bit quicker and smoother. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any objections to the consent agenda?
No.
Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We have no resolutions this evening, and we have no ordinances on second reading, so we will go to our ordinance on first reading, which is ordinance number 1730. And our city manager is filling in for our city clerk, who is under the weather this evening. So would you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the city of Crestview, Florida, providing for compliance with the state of Florida statute, providing for administrative approval of all alcoholic beverage license applications, and removing the requirement for council approval of said applications, providing for authority, providing for servability, providing for Scrivener's errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for appeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And now, would you also make the presentation to the council?
Yes, sir. And as you stated, I'm also covering in for Ms. Betsy this evening because she's under the weather, so if it's all right with the council, I'll actually probably stay right here and do the presentation from here. What I'd like to do, because of the gravity of this particular ordinance, I'd like to, instead of just providing the staff report, I'm going to take us on a line-by-line walk through the ordinance so that we can discuss everything that is in discussion today and any of the proposed changes. Before I do that, I want to just remind the council and the audience of how we got to this point. As you all are well aware, at a previous council meeting, Councilman Rensich asked us to look into and provide for an explanation of our alcohol ordinance, any areas that may be inconsistent with either state statute or the Constitution of the United States, and then also to look into explaining what impact the current language in the ordinance had on different types of businesses, different tiers or levels of businesses, as it related to the sale and consumption of alcohol on premises. So at a workshop earlier this month, we spent several hours going over those identified changes. In your council agenda, I did provide for you the presentation that we provided previously, which explained in detail why some of these areas we have identified to be unconstitutional. Following that meeting, you know, we wanted to make sure that we involved everybody we possibly could. I had spoken with Councilman Blocker about it, and he put me in contact with Pastor Gene Strickland, who is one of the, I guess, coordinating pastors for the Ministerial Association here in Crestview. So since the workshop, I have met with the group, for all those who had shown up there, I met with several pastors individually, I met with the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I met with the Main Street Board of Directors to overview what you, as a council, outlined as the areas of interest in addressing as we move forward in trying to get to an ordinance. So as a result of all of those meetings, we really seem to have come to what I believe to be a consensus on an area of what is compromised between both ends of the spectrum. There are those who would like for us to remove all language that relates to anyone having the authority other than by zoning on where a business of any type that sells alcohol could be. So there are some that would like to remove the buffer and allow the sale of alcohol at any level licensed by the state anywhere. And then there are those that would like to do nothing and/or just take out the illegal sections, or the unconstitutional sections, which would then limit businesses, even that were restaurants serving alcohol, to go in within any of the 500-foot buffers, which we can provide. I can show you today on the map, but I provided for you previously, and there's a little over 380 acres of land, 210 parcels of commercially zoned property that would be then affected. In addition to believing that we had come to a compromise or a consensus between most of the individuals and/or groups that we had spoken with, and by compromise, I do mean just that. A good compromise means that nobody's happy, but everybody's okay. And really, that's where we kind of felt like we were. And so that, in addition to the fact that I received a request for a business to be allowed to open, which is directly impacted by this ordinance earlier this week. And as I explained, as the executive officer for the city, it puts me in a situation where when a portion of our code or ordinance has been deemed to be illegal or unconstitutional, I cannot continue to enforce that. So we had a business who had received a letter of approval from a church. It was directly adjacent to a church, and they had received a letter in 2018 allowing them to open a restaurant/bar, restaurant pub, gastro pub, whatever that is. And so when it came time for us to actually release the business tax receipt, we were faced with the question of, "Do I release this business tax receipt?" Because the only thing allowing them to open within the 500-foot buffer is the letter that they had previously received. So after a very lengthy conversation with our attorney, we determined that since there was no date specific for a business opening following the issuance of that letter, that we would allow them to open, as though they were existing nonconformity. We, again, found compromise on that, which, again, means nobody's happy and everybody's happy. So I said all that to say this: We have to do something. We have to make a decision because I need to know how to direct my staff. So believing that we were at a compromise with everyone, we drafted an ordinance and turned what would have been a workshop into a first reading. So what you have before you tonight is a complete ordinance that addresses each of the areas that you, as a board, basically found consensus on during the workshop. And where we came to that night was that we would exempt restaurants from any of the requirements. So if a business was a legitimate restaurant, not somebody who served hors d'oeuvres and then alcohol, but a legitimate restaurant, that they should be exempt from any requirements of a buffer. And then we also said that we would obviously remove any of the sections of our ordinance that were deemed to be unconstitutional or illegal, or where we had added additional requirements. And then we, in addition to that, said that we believed that if we were going to make any changes that would allow an expansion of this use, that the appropriate place to do that would be in the Main Street Downtown CRA District, as it is our revitalization district. And so the third point was that we would look at expanding the map. And as I explained to you when I did the presentation at the workshop, I had no idea why the line ended where the line ended. I can assure you, I know exactly why the line ended where the line ended today. But at the time that we talked about it, and I'll bring that up so that we can take a look at it. This is the existing border of the exemption area. So some of the confusion has been also that the city was going to create a bunch of rules that were going to allow people to walk up and down the street without alcoholic beverages and all of that, and none of that is true. We are not, nor could we, be an open container district. There are some very specific requirements that you have to meet. You have to be on an navigable waterway. You have to be a designated district. There's some things that occur at the state level, but we would want to anyways, but that's not at all in the conversation. But this area here is the area that would be exempt from the 500-foot, would have been previously exempt from the 500-foot buffer. And so as a part of the conversation we had during the workshop, we discussed an expansion of this area to cover the entire area of Main Street. And actually, what we talked about was having it be, to match the first, initially adopted CRA district and the second amendment to the CRA district, which I'll show you in some maps as we get a little bit closer. So with all of that preamble, Mr. Mayor, I will now begin to work my way through the ordinance. Is there any questions from the council on anything that I've just stated, or any clarification I need to make before I work through the ordinance itself?
No.
All right. Feel free to stop me along the way if you need to, council members. All right. So the ordinance, the language of the ordinance is very normal, as far as it looks exactly like you typically see it. Whenever we look at an ordinance, and the council knows this, but since we're all here together as family today, I want to make sure we're clear. Whenever you see a section that is underlined, the underlined section means that it is new, completely new to our code. Anytime that you see a strike that runs through a word or through a section of words, it means that that section was originally in the code, and as a part of this ordinance is being therefore stricken. So underlines mean additions, strikethroughs mean that it's being stricken. For the purpose of this presentation and for the purpose of your packets, council members, what you see in red was to show the changes that had been made. As we work our way through here, we did the initial posting of the ordinance, and the attorney and I had some conversation following that, and there were some areas that needed clarification. And also, as we looked at it, we really wanted to make sure we were transparent, so we wanted to add, I added and provided for you an entire chapter six, for you to look at the whole ordinance in context. So first thing that you find on this ordinance is under the definitions, we have defined a new term, which is brewery. Our current ordinance did not have a definition for a brewery, but because the conversation had come up so much, we wanted to make sure we were all clear on what that was. It is a business distinctly different from a bar and a nightclub, and that it is governed under Florida statutes 561-221, and it derives its sale from malt liquor beverages, I'm sorry, malt beverages or beer that are sometimes brewed on-site for on-site consumption. Hard liquor or spirits will not be sold or consumed at a brewery. So when it is permitted as a brewery, it will not have hard liquor associated with it. So when we refer to that in some of the areas, it's important that we understand that. Here, the next one, you see that this is a combination of a strikethrough and an underline. We originally had called that overlay district the Main Street District. Because it goes off of Main Street now, and it did before, we actually changed it to the Downtown Commercial District. And then we provided an explanation for that, and that will be shown here in just a second in the maps. Actually, I'll go ahead and bring them up. So that definition actually relates to a map that looks like this. So whereas previously, if you can see my cursor on here, whereas previously, the line ran right here, just beyond, at Martin Luther King, or Chestnut, I think, Martin Luther King on this side, it now extends all the way down to the connection at 85. In addition, up here on the north end, it originally stopped at Cedar, and it includes all of the area that is inside of the CRA District. If you, council members, if you will remember, we actually discussed doing the entire portion of the CRA, which would have put it then north of Highway 90. As a result of my conversations with the Ministerial Association and a large portion of the public, there was really a, what I felt to be a legitimate question as to why we needed to go north of 90 if we were focusing in on our downtown Main Street area. And so what's been provided for you today is a map that removes that area north of Highway 90. Before I move on from there, do you have any questions, council members? Okay. Let me get back to where I was at. All right. So that map there demonstrated for you the Downtown Commercial Business District. As we work our way through the ordinance, you'll see that we changed a couple of words. We actually struck, anything that is in blue, again, was later on, conversation between the attorney and myself. So Mr. Holloway can answer some questions as well if you'd like. But these were areas where we felt like there was inconsistency. When you originally got the ordinance, we took and added just the sections that were being changed. But when we looked at that and the bigger of chapter six, he identified, thankfully for me, some inconsistencies between those, what was being left in the ordinance and what was actually being addressed and changed. And so that's where these blue areas came in. So instead of the term bona fide restaurant being used, we changed it to restaurant. And then we defined that for you to say that it is, whereas 51% of the gross proceeds come from food and non-alcoholic beverages. The reason that we struck the section that said required by Rule 61A 301 of the Florida Administrative Code is because that section defines specifically a bona fide restaurant, and it has some size requirements. And our focus was on the percentage of sales that would be food versus alcohol. And also, well, I mean, you can grab it. Well, specifically to liquor, is what he's telling me. All right. So in addition to that, because the term facility was used so much, we wanted to make sure that you got a chance to see what facility actually was defined as. And then, excuse me, inside facility, there were several terms that were also defined, such as church facility. You see, we changed that term to place of worship. That is more of a legal trend that's been going on because some entities that do worship or consider themselves to be places of worship do not prefer to be referred to as a church. So we cleared it up and matched it with the statute. School facility, you will see the areas that are stricken in there. It says, "means a place of public assembly." All of that first section that is struck in was the city-specific definition for school facility. What you have there below in the underlined section that says, "means an organization of students for instructional purposes on an elementary, middle, or junior high school, or secondary or high school, or other public school level authorized under and governed by the rules of the State Board of Education or private school as defined by statute." The reason we put that language in there is because the language we had was not consistent with language that a school, that would define a school. One of the things we had in our original language was it addressed educating and training of preschool. That is a section that is not defined as a school in the statute for the 500-foot buffer. And so ours was more stringent than the state there, so we did remove that. I want to make sure everyone's clear on that. Any questions? All right. Continuing to move on, now we get into kind of the meat of where the changes occur. In section six, seven, it's the distances for bottle clubs and et cetera, and that's where we really start to get into the distances between there and a church or place of worship now. And so you'll see that we changed anywhere the term church was written, we used the term place of worship. And then all of the language stayed the same about the 500-foot, until you get to about halfway down where the red lines start and it says, "except a restaurant," which drives at least 51% of its gross revenues from the sale of food, restaurant-related services, and non-alcoholic beverages. May serve alcoholic beverages for the consumption on premise. And this is another section that the attorney, Mr. Holloway, added, which I thought was appropriate as well. I'm glad he caught it. It's something I missed. It said, "during the hours in which a restaurant provides full-service menu to the public." That way, they need to be serving food as long as they're serving alcohol. That was the point, instead of stopping the sale of food and then continuing to serve alcohol into the night, because our code allows you to serve alcohol until four in the morning. And so he made a great point. They need to be serving food at the same time they're serving alcohol, because that's the point of that exemption. And again, that's because that's the area that's exempted from that 500-foot buffer. You'll see the area there beneath it where it is struck in, and it says, "providing the owner of a property which is on a church is located, consents in writing." I think we beat to death that that's been deemed unconstitutional, so we removed that. And then the other thing that I think is important, as you get to the bottom of this paragraph, right, starting right here at the "if any" portion. So this is how we determine the distance. It says, "if any portion of the building which is in use as the primary worship area lies within such radius, then the place of worship shall be deemed to be within the distance." The Downtown Commercial District is exempt from these provisions. So let's talk about what that means. The previous ordinance basically had it, and remember, I said there were 57 properties, I said 57 churches. It's actually 57 properties owned by 44 churches, which created the circled 500-foot buffers throughout the city. That's just inside the city limits. What this does is this says, okay, if a church, because going back to the gastro pub conversation, we have a property that's owned by a church, not occupied by a church, but the business still had to obtain permission from that church and/or would have been subject to it. And so what this does is it does away with the idea that a church facility or a place of worship, a church, whatever, buys up a piece of property in order to take a restaurant or pub out of the equation. Does that make sense to the council? Okay. So that's why that language is written that way. If it's the building where worship is occurring, and that's the place where it's going on, then definitely that's where the buffer exists. That was pretty good. All right. So I talk with my hands. I'm sitting down, so. All right. Moving on, again, this is where it says, "the Downtown Commercial District, Business District, is exempt from these provisions." So what that means is we've allowed anything that serves alcohol but serves 51% food to go anywhere in the city. But if it was a bar, a full-on bar, or something that did not have 51% of its sale being food, then it would not be allowed within that 500-foot of the place of worship, except for in the Downtown Commercial District. That's what that last sentence means. So that section was previously in the code, but that district was smaller as we looked at the maps earlier. Any questions before I move on? All right. The next thing is distances from the school. In parent B, we took out the section, we added brewery, and then we took out the section that said 500 feet, and we did the state of Florida mandated distance. That way, if the distance changed, it is currently 500 feet, but it could change. It could change up or it could change down. If it changed up, we'd be required to anyway. If you, as a council, chose that you wanted to maintain 500, no matter what the state did, this would be the place where you put that back in. Again, the definition of a school is public or private elementary school, middle school, or secondary school, not adding any of the additional things that the city had added previously. And then it goes down to talk about the distances and where they're located in the current statute. I've never been a real big fan of adding statute sections to ordinances because they change, but I wanted us to be real clear and transparent as we adopt this ordinance. You'll notice that this section that says, "the Main Street Commercial Business District is exempt from these provisions," we removed that because a school is a school, and you can't have a bar within 500-foot of a school anywhere. The state has a greater, more stringent requirement on it. What I'm assuming that may have been, when I talked to you originally, I said I couldn't figure out how that got in there. As I've worked my way through this, they may have had it in there because our definition was so much more strict than the state's. So this may have said, "in the downtown area, you can have it next to one that's a preschool, if not defined by the statute." But if that's the case, it was super misleading. Continuing on, all of section C is stricken, and it says, "reserved." Again, this is the section of the statute where it dealt specifically with the distance to a residence. It said that we couldn't be within 300-foot of any property, and then it went through this very convoluted process where you had to get a certain percentage of the residential properties to agree to it. This, again, is something that should be addressed through compatibility on the zoning side. One of the questions I got is, "what does reserved mean down there at the bottom?" Reserved means that we do not want to renumber and re-letter the entire ordinance, so we just put reserve there. In the future, if you added something back, that leaves open a space, you could add something, but it's just because otherwise you're renumbering everything in any form that relates to this document, anything would have to be changed. So the term reserve just means we're reserving it out, reserved for some change in the future. Any questions on why we removed that? Okay. Distance from smaller establishments.
Similar.
I'm sorry, similar establishments, yes. This is a section that came up. We had very little conversation about this, and again, this is an interesting one to have for a bar. Not everywhere that I've worked has got this, but we did believe that it kind of maintains, as you all know, as the council knows, and then you have talked to, I think that this is an opportunity for us to help to steer where we go as a community. And so by maintaining this 500-foot between similar businesses, helps to limit the number of them that we will get in the area where they're allowed. So these distances is determined by measuring along the path of normal, safe pedestrian travel from the primary entrance of each establishment to the public entrance of a similar establishment. This is the way that most ordinances actually measure distances. Ours has that circle buffer around the building. It makes it a little bit, ours is more strict than most others I've seen. This is the common way you do it. From door to door, as you walk, is it 500 feet? If it is, if it's more than 500 feet, then you can do it. So we wanted to, anyway, one of the things it does say in here, it does say, unless it's in the Downtown Commercial Business District, so again, if it's inside that business district, it is exempt from this requirement as well, which means that you could have similar-type businesses closer than 500-foot inside that district. Any questions?
And the purpose of this was to keep bar from bar from bar opening up right next to each other.
Yes, sir. As I've said all along, my goal is to make sure that we, while we open up for the opportunity for restaurants and we steer it, maybe... that we, while we open up for the opportunity for restaurants and we steer it, maybe brew pubs or whatever, just, whatever those pubs are, that we don't turn around and turn into bars lined up and down all of 85. So, okay. Going on to E, E again is a section that was completely stricken from the ordinance. The reason this was stricken is because it dealt with an additional requirement of city council to approve a, I guess it was called a certificate of compliance. The state statute, it's, the state of Florida issues alcohol li, liquor licenses and/or beer and wine licenses or whatever category it is. So, they have very specific requirements. They also have language that says that we cannot create our own licensing process for this. And so, we did, anyway, because we do that sometimes here. And so, what, what we, what this does is that completely removes it. Again, it will be a yes or no question, approved at a staff level, and we will move on. We did leave in here the section for an administrative fee. They had $50 in here for that fee for a zoning certification. I just, you never want to put a fee price in an ordinance for a couple of reasons, but primarily, it's better if it goes into an overall fee resolution, which you all will get from me later on this year sometime, where we combine any fee that the city charges into a resolution, so it's in a clear place where everybody can see it. And, and it's easier to change either up or down. And quite frankly, when you see this one, it won't be 50 bucks. Typically, it's like a $20 fee or a $25 fee for a zoning certification. So, really, that's just housekeeping? Any question on that? Alright, Mr. Holloway had a very important word executed that he added down here. I had approved, he said executed, that's because we actually do, there is an action taken by the development, in this particular case, the Community Development Services Director, who will sign it, so they execute the zoning letter. So, that was just lawyer talk. Alright, the rest of that was also all removed. Again, any questions as we continue to work our way down? Alright. The next section deals with, oh, H was an interesting one too. This one provided you as the council the ability to revoke that certificate that you could not give them anyway. But, we, we have a code enforcement process for that. We, we, during the next year, right after the first of the year, we're going to have a meeting, a joint meeting between the city council and our local planning agency, and we're going to review our administrative portion of our land development code and code ordinances. And that's where we're going to address some of the issues related to code enforcement and how we deal with them, and who takes care of them, and all of that kind of stuff. But, what will, what you will probably see as a recommendation from me is to move, I know we just set up our code board, but we may move more towards a magistrate. And if we have a magistrate and we have a good ordinance that governs what, you know, how people are supposed to conduct business, if they don't, it'll go before a judge. Or somebody that looks like a judge. Any question on that? Alright, continue to work your way down. This is, in the exception portion, this is what we call existing non-conformity, addressing an existing non-conformity. And the, and the added portion says, "In the event that a place of worship or school should be opened within the distances noted above, the existing establishment selling alcohol shall be allowed to continue to operate without being deemed, without being deemed a compliant non-conformity until such time as the existing establishment discontinues use for a period of 180 days." John, I just see what you said. So, actually, what we'll need to do, there is a Scrivener's error in that. It says, "Without being deemed a compliant non-conformity", it, the word "without" will come out of there.
Because it is.
Because it will be deemed a compliant non-conformity. And Mr. Holloway tried to get me to fix that and I didn't understand what he was asking.
But it's allowed, but it is a non-conformity.
Right, and so, what this means by being a compliant non-conformity, there's other areas of the code that, where it says that a non-conformity can't do anything, it can't expand, it can't grow, it can't fix itself, it can't do anything. And when it stops being in use, then it goes away. What this says is that it will be deemed a compliant non-conformity, which means if they added, did remodeling, or did something like that, they could do it. But once they moved away, they would, and it stayed closed for that 80 days, it would, or 180 days, it would go away. So, is there any questions about that from the council's perspective? Other than my confusing wording, I didn't let you talk me out of. That's why it's good we're reading all the way through it. Alright, 6-8 is, it shall be unlawful. This is a section that talks again about the application for their approval. That has to be taken, oh, this is the additional step, having to go to city council. Again, it's a yes or no answer, it should be approved at the, at the, at the employee, or at the staff level. We covered that one in pretty good detail. 610 deals again, the only change there is the change in the name of it from Main Street to Downtown Commercial Business District. B and C were all completely stricken. These, again, this is where we're trying to, I guess we were trying to say that you couldn't be outside of a business and drinking outside of a business within 500 feet. I, I wasn't really sure what they were trying to do, but the state of Florida, when they license it, you license the footprint of your business. So, if your business sells alcohol, there's a, there's a place that your permit says they can sell it in. You're responsible if they try to walk out of there with a beer in their hand. Our, our code doesn't allow you to do that, and then your license doesn't allow you to do it either. The only time somebody could have done that is if we were what's called a open container district. We are not, nor are we seeking to become one. So, this language was just unnecessary. It was unenforceable and a bunch of language that wasn't clear. So, it came out. I think what they were trying to say is you can't buy it at the thrifty and sit outside and drink. But that's by law anyways, well, the chief should be taking care of that anyhow. 611, again, we changed the title. And then, when you go into, this is actually, this section here deals with special events. Now, when we talk about special events, this, this can occur anywhere within that downtown commercial district. So, right now, most of our stuff stays from the railroad tracks going north to about the courthouse. But if, in the event we ever wanted to do an event that were the entire district, once you approve this district, it could go that distance. I think, I think Sandra's hiding in the back somewhere, but, but what you'll find is that right now, the sizes of our events, even, even Fall Festival, which brings somewhere around, when we can have it, around 11,000 people to 15,000 people, it's not big enough to go any further than that distance. The only time you maybe would do that is if you wanted to extend the parade for some reason, you could extend it down. But you can, by this ordinance, the way that it's written, you could definitely do that. Also, it changes, instead of having the mayor sign it, it's my office or my designee that signs it. I will definitely have it, it won't be myself, it'll be a designee that signs that. Somebody who's actually reviewing the statute and the code to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Again, that was not something that the mayor would have been doing, even, even the previous mayor. So, it's important that it's at the person that is responsible for the review that signs that form. Alright, and then it's a name change, and then that is the end of the changes that are provided. So, so that we can, again, the biggest thing that, other than the, the removal of, or the language that allows for anything that sells more than 51% food, that's all throughout the city of Crestview. The only exemption areas, or the exemption areas are, this was the existing one, and what's being proposed is this one here. And I wanted to show this because I know that there are some, some individuals from Live Point here tonight, and this is the, this is going to be one of the areas I think that they have their greatest concern with. So, I want to make sure that we have access, easy access to it. But, that is an overview council of the ordinance as it is written. I would be happy to take any questions that you might have, and I'll also be happy, as you work through the public comments, I'll take those any way you'd like, either through answering or just listening, whatever suits the council.
Any comments, questions before I open it up to the public? Okay, yeah, go ahead, Constance Blocker.
From all these revisions that had been presented, and I put my trust in that fellow there with the black suit. And if this city, I have told him, and if this city finds that any of these things that he assures me he has reviewed, reviewed, and signed off on them, it has not followed to district accordance per se, I furnish the tar to tether and feather him out of this town. But he assures me this will work in compliance with our state and our city requirements. And I appreciate what they have done for that. But I'm basing my belief on that man right there. So, y'all see him now, he may change look, but look at him good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Constance LaBuff.
Yeah, I, I welcome the comments from everybody here and anybody else that wants to talk about it, but I would like to know if you are indeed a resident of the city of Crestview when you make your presentation. That is, that you live and/or vote in the city of Crestview. I'll be glad to listen to anybody's conversation, but I would just like to know that point. Because I want to make sure that the citizens of Crestview have a voice in what the city council decides. And the only way we can do that is to know if you are indeed within the voting district of Crestview City Prop. Okay, that's my request.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm not going to open up to the public, I'll call you up. Give you three minutes. We do have a device, in the ten or three minutes, it drops you down, down on the next level. Other than that, it'll be alright. So, the first person I'm going to call up is April Meyer. I'm going to go by how you signed in. If somebody didn't sign in, you want to speak, come on up here and we'll let you sign up. Just give us your name and address and try to keep your remarks.
Hello, my name is April Meyer. I am not a resident of the city of Crestview, but I am a business owner in the city of Crestview proper, which is adjacent to this area that you're talking about. My address is 5810 Antler Way in Crestview, Florida. I live on the north side of the town, which I hope one day that our city grows and some of those citizens decide to become incorporated into the city. That way, we would have a little more tax money that comes into our city. I would vote to pay that. However, what I'm here for tonight is I just want to state my view on the alcohol ordinance thing. I think the city of Crestview puts a chokehold sometimes on businesses. And I get it, I don't want to see a city where we have rack and ruin of alcohol establishments all over the place. I don't have a problem with alcohol. What I have a problem with is how some citizens, you know, perceive that. Last week, or the last council meeting, I was quite offended by one of the pastors that came and slumped all the military in and said that the military would come and it would be a big issue. Well, I'm here to tell you, I spent 21 years in the Air Force, but the military of today is not the military that he was talking about. I was asking the chief of police approximately how many people you have for DUI in our city. And he, the pastor was stating that we'd have all these people who were drunk and disorderly and things like that. I don't think that's the case. What we're talking here is a cultural thing, more or less. You have a lot of young people that drive to the south end of our county to go out, to actually go out to dinner, have a glass of wine perhaps. They usually have a designated driver and they come back to our city. Our city is losing money by the day. Every single car that heads down, if you go out there at 5:30 in the evening and just see how much traffic is heading towards Destin, there's where all of our money is going. If we do not change this ordinance and bring our city up to a more modern and vibrant city by changing some of these things, we're going to just be losing people who will just move out of our city. And our city will never be able to progress. It took a lot, as you know, I'm the person who is responsible to try to raise the money for the dog park. It's one of those things that you have to keep fighting and keep fighting for, but I don't think this is something that we should fight for. This is something that we need the tax revenue in our city to make better parks, to make better areas for people to use. Part of that money will come from this revenue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Now, I'll call on Mr. Paul Lowry. And if, I don't know if you're bringing Sandra with you? See both names on here?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Paul Lowry. I am the president for the Main Street Crestview Association. Ms. Sandra Wilson, she is our executive director. And recently, at our last board meeting, Mr. Bolduc came and made a presentation to us. Let me back up, I am a resident of Crestview and also have a business in the downtown district. Anyway, he made a presentation to us about the changes that we're looking at making. And three years ago, when the ordinance came up for, you know, exempting the downtown district, we took a stand officially from the board, took a vote, and our board agreed with that exemption. We took a similar stance this time. I know it's a little bit different in the ordinance. But we did take an official vote, it was unanimous that we agree in the, the changes for the, either elimination of the buffer, shortening of the buffer for the different businesses. And, and we too, we don't want to see bar after bar after bar, but we do think that we're missing the boat on a lot of businesses that can come in, such as the restaurants that poke people crow and voice their opinion on, on social media constantly about the businesses and restaurants that they would like to have in Crestview. And when you're eliminating real estate, I think it's, it's hurting that, that option of having those businesses coming in. I certainly appreciate this reduction in that buffer to allow it, certainly for the restaurants to come in. We certainly believe that, you know, the economic impact would be significant with this, with the revenue. Certainly would be enough revenue to possibly hire some new, you know, police force, code enforcement. The revenue's just there, I, if you check out Danville, Kentucky, they went through similar issues and they, their impact was just tremendous. The revenue and them being able to purchase those new bodies in the city. There was certainly a misplaced fear three years ago when this was brought up before, that what Crestview was going to become. Crestview's still a great city. We didn't change, we didn't go down the tubes, we didn't, you know, go down the drain as some would make you believe that that was going to happen by allowing more alcohol sales in businesses in the city. So, that did not happen. We did take that, again.
Please record up, Paul.
Okay, we took the official vote and we'd like to read the letter into record if we could, the email that we sent to the council and mayor.
Sandra Wilson, I, I'm not part of the city, I live on the south end, but I'm the executive director for Main Street. And our letter to Mayor Witten and the city council members goes as follows. At a recent Main Street Crestview Association Board of Directors meeting, Mr. Bolduc attended and made a presentation on the potential changes to Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances. He outlined several suggested changes to the ordinance. Of these suggested changes, the board was especially interested in the proposal to expand the Main Street downtown exemption area. We feel that this specific suggested change will greatly benefit the businesses and owners of the properties located on Main Street and throughout the CRA district. We believe this change, if implemented, would have a direct impact on potential growth, economic development, job creation, and sustainability for the downtown business district by extend, expanding the variety of businesses allowed in this area. As you know, there are multiple buildings on Main Street that are unoccupied, and making these necessary changes is essential to opening the door to larger base, larger base of potential businesses to fill these vacancies. The Main Street Board voted unanimously to take an official position in favor of expanding the Main Street downtown exemption area and for the reduction of, eliminating of the buffer zones currently in place around churches, schools, and residential areas. We offer our support in favor of the changes and hope this support helps you in your deliberations, decisions, and actions moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
If I might ask, I'm sorry, how, how many members are on your, on the association?
14.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the organization or the board of directors?
No, not the board of directors, the organization itself. That's why, I thought it was more than that, I just wanted to make sure.
14 on the board, 60 totals, what you're saying.
That encompasses major, a super majority of the, the owners of downtown Main Street, right? Doesn't just, all over the city. All over the city, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Tonan, please.
Hi, I'm Bill Tonan. I'm the owner of Caspa Coffee Company, my wife and I, and we live above the Caspa Coffee Company downtown, 196 West Pine Avenue. As a matter of fact, we made a conscious choice to invest in the CRA district in downtown, to employ people downtown. We invested personal resources and we live amongst the people there. We're doubling down on downtown, we're investing in another business downtown, which will employ even more people. So, our view of the world is economics floats all the boats in the harbor, and so we're excited that the city's considering action, continued action, as was noted, three years ago, there was some movement, to open up a more business-enabling environment, because employment's important. To every one of my employees that gets a paycheck, it's very important, believe me. We do a lot of training of young people and people that have difficult things in their past, and we bring them on as employees, we train them, we kind of push them forward. With the next business, we'll be doubling or tripling our employment. Along with that, there's been an investment in buildings and assets, property values, which will contribute to taxes, 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 which also floats the boats in the harbor. So, we're about, about those kinds of things that'll encourage more growth, property values increasing, people being able to sustain their families and grow the community in harmony. Restaurants provide fellowship, they provide avenues of entertainment, so they're healthy things. We've had consultants tell the city so, so it's not just my words. I did the math, I went out and Googled Olive Garden, that was mentioned as a kind of a business that's been blocked because of the, all the concentric circles of buffers throughout the whole city. And they employ on average about 112 employees. So, not to make them the notable exception, but just to point out, that's a lot of employment. That's a lot of taxes, that's a lot of growth, and the city does need more jobs. The CRA district, if y'all don't know, is a blighted area by definition. It needs help, it needs assistance. And so, this kind of an ordinance, especially the first part and even the second part, the expansion of that downtown zone is a good thing. It'll employ more people, and I'm anxious for that to happen. And again, we're more than anxious, we're motivated, and we're committed. And we're committed to work with the city council. Thank you all for your time and for working through all of these steps with all sorts of groups. I really appreciate that. You're doing a good job. Thank you.
Mr. Dusty Holloway?
Good evening. My name's Dusty Holloway. I'm not a resident of the city of Crestview, but my dad and I, we are business owners, actually right across the street from here, and I'm a member of Life Point Church. And first of all, I want to say thank you for y'all's time and effort that y'all are putting into making Crestview a great place. It's not my home as far as residence, but as a business owner, I definitely appreciate everything that y'all do to make it a better place for business. With that being said, with everything that we're talking about tonight, first of all, I want to speak first to the restaurant side of this ordinance. And it sounds like that we have been operating, we being the city of Crestview, maybe not in the way that the state of Florida says that we should operate whenever it comes to restaurants and where they can and cannot establish. My opinion on that is if we need, if we are not in line with the state statutes, the constitution, whatever it may be, in regards to restaurants, we need to fall in line with that, have absolutely no problem with that. As far as Main Street, I would love to see more restaurants on Main Street. I think that's great. It's great for business, it's great for more places for people to go eat, like Ms. April mentioned. It doesn't, it keeps people from going to Destin, Niceville, places other than Crestview. The issue I do have as, as a member of Life Point is with the potential expansion of the district down south of where it currently sits. As in my, as far as I'm concerned, I would love to see that area stay the way it is because of Life Point. I'm a fifth-generation member of Life Point. My great-grandmother helped find, found or found Life Point. We've been at that same location for over 100 years now. You know, whenever I think about, not the restaurant side, but the ability for, you know, whether it be gastropubs, microbreweries, bars, nightclubs, that's, that's just an issue that I personally draw issue with. You know, I would like to think that out of the respect of the church and the way that the church in this city has joined arms with events and functions, that there will maybe be some way, if y'all feel like you need to expand down that way, you know, you do what you do. But if some way there's possibility of considering Life Point, you know, and keeping a buffer around Life Point. One of the things that was mentioned on there was if you're outside of that Main Street area, there's a 500-foot buffer where one business can't come on top of another business that's of the same type. But that buffer is not included for Main Street. So, my concern is, not to say that it would happen, but if you have a bar, a nightclub, a gastropub, a brewery or whatever, those can start lining up one on top of the other, and then that is just something that concerns me for, as, as a member of Life Point, the fact that we have 200 to 250 kids from, say, kindergarten on up to high school age on Wednesday night that come in and out of our sanctuary, our church, that I just don't want them to face possibly somebody that might have had maybe one too many drinks, that might say something to a young adult lady that she shouldn't have to hear. Not saying that it would, but you never know.
Can you wrap it up, Ms. Holloway?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any comments? Okay, thank you. And Reverend Lagonis, you wanted to speak to us?
Sure, thank you for your time. Michael Lagonis, I'm actually the lead pastor over at Life Point Church, and thank you. I do live in the city limits. I just want to express some concerns. First, I want to thank Tim. Tim, thanks for meeting with me multiple times, even to just bring some clarity to some things. You know, I understand, as Dusty said, I do, I agree with him. I want our city to expand, I want our city to grow. I believe, I love this city, and I've only been here for just a short amount of time. And in the shorter amount of time I've been here, I've seen growth already happen. I convinced my best friend to move here just recently and telling him like, man, you want to be a part of what's happening in this city. So, I'm for growth, I'm for jobs, I'm for just health, to be honest with you. But I'm not for that on the, at the expense of families. And to be honest, and this might be my own opinion, but I don't know that opening the door to alcohol sales in a way, in the downtown district, in a way that has a just total free-for-all, actually brings that type of growth and health. I think, when I think of Life Point specifically and where we're located and what happens in our church, it's important to me that you guys understand that. Although I am for and I'm okay with us lining up when it comes to the idea of restaurants, the idea of a church having to be able to dictate if a business can open or not open, I don't think that's, that's correct. I think all that needs to be aligned up right and correctly. Mr. Tim made it clear to me that that opens the door for the potential of a restaurant opening literally right next door to me. I'm okay with that. I understand that and I'm good with that. What I'm not okay with is all of a sudden, a bar to be opening up right behind my church. For example, every Wednesday night, we have between 30 and 40 teenagers that leave our church and walk directly into that neighborhood that's right behind our church. They're walking out there in the dark, and for us, we're like, man, that's dark, it's dangerous, that's not a great place to walk. It makes it more dangerous in my mind if there's a bar there, or there are people, or an area right there behind our church where people are drinking and spending time there. I do understand that most people will be able to walk out of there just fine and maybe drive home just fine, but it only takes a handful. It only takes a couple, and it only takes one time for one person to walk out of there intoxicated to hurt one of these kids. We also have, we have a preschool there. We have kids that are there every day of the week. Bars aren't only open at night, that's how we picture them, they're open during the day too. And most of the time, if you're drinking during the day, you're really having a bad day, okay? We have kids, preschool, we have a bus stop right behind our church where a bus stops and unloads preschool children, where parents come and pick up their kids. I am for you guys lining up the thing you need to. I am 100% opposed to the idea of expanding that all the way through there, if for whatever reason. Here's one, here's my plea to you. If for whatever reason you guys feel like, hey, man, we're going to pull this, we're going to do this, our vote is for, to do this. Again, I just stress what Dusty said, please consider our church, the fact that we've been there this long, the fact that we've partnered with the city for so long, what we do for the city, and would you, would you guys consider, figure out a way to make some sort of exception when it comes to the area at least around our church? Again, I'd rather not move at all, but if it is going to move, please consider some way written in there, maybe it's something like, any church has been there 100 years or more. I think that would cover, would cover us well.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan Price, please.
Good evening, I'm Ryan Price. I live at 1302 Jeffery Drive, but tonight I am standing before you as the chairman-elect of the Crestview Area Chamber of Commerce. And simply put, the Crestview Area Chamber of Commerce stands in support of the updating the current city ordinance as it relates to the businesses and the sale of alcohol that will allow, enhance, and attract businesses to our community while maintaining the character of our community and Mr. Hayes, over 300 members in the chamber currently.
Thank you.
You read my mind.
I believe this is Brian Fulmer? Fulmer? Fulmer, all right, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Brian Fulmer, 524 Tom Sawyer Lane. I am a resident of the city of Crestview, I've been for 12 years. The United States Air Force brought my wife and I here 12 years ago. We chose to stay in the city of Crestview and retire. We want to raise our families here because we love what the city has to offer, we love the way the city's going. But with that, I do want everybody to know, as a resident, I do support this ordinance as written. This town needs to go in this direction, we need these abilities. I consider myself very active in this community. I spend a lot of money at the restaurants and the stores that have spoken tonight, and I want to spend more of it in more of those places, and I want to have those options. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDuffie from LaLala?
My name is Mike McDuffie. I live at 5841 Friendship Lane, which is about that far outside the city of Crestview, so I welcome, I welcome being annexed into the city as well. My point has been made, we are in favor, very much in favor of the law as it's been revised and written, and the point's already made, and so I'll waive the rest of my time. I do appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Brown, please.
Not a city resident, I think I live a block or two outside. I do lead the church in the city limits and am a co-owner of a business on Main Street. So, addresses would be 298 North Wilson for the church, 286 North Main for the restaurant. When we were looking to buy the church property on Wilson Street recently, one of the committees that we needed to meet with asked us specifically, asked me specifically, about how we felt if a business was to open up next door or across the street that sold alcohol, or about city festivals and such where there might be people on the street with alcohol. We commented then that that was not something that we objected to, and would just like to reiterate that we stick to our word. We're not pulling back on that now, we still do not object to those sorts of things. Would like to speak as well as as a business owner and someone in the community, at the last council meeting, Councilman Blocker commented about keeping Crestview family-friendly, and I concur. I have four daughters myself. Our church is mostly young people with large families. We do want it to be family-friendly and would believe that this ordinance, as it's proposed, would be family-friendly by giving our families more food and entertainment options that they currently leave Crestview to obtain. And as Mr. Tonan mentioned a moment ago, as a restaurant owner here in the community, we seek to expand our hours, and by doing so, would seek to double the number of people that we employ here in the city, and that's good for Crestview residents. I do want to also express a sympathy with Life Point Church. I'm not equipped currently to really speak towards the concerns that they have, but I would want to say to them, I do sympathize with that, and I trust you gentlemen and them to continue working on a resolution in that area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Megan Ramos?
Hi, my name's Megan Ramos. I'm residing within city residence, or city limits. I'm at 196 West Pine Avenue, and I'm just going to say that I'm part of the many people who go out of the city and spend all of our money that would be tax dollars here, going out to different restaurants and so on in Destin and Pensacola, and I would love to see more entertaining options here where I can take my family to have more, wow, I'm not a good public speaker, but.
No, you're doing great. Don't worry about it.
Oh, my goodness. But having more options and things to do and go, wow, I don't think that's.
That's Tim.
It was the last guy, sorry.
It's just Tim.
He sidetracked him.
All right, but yeah, so my points are, the points have been brought up a lot by everybody else, I'm not going to keep talking, but very for the ordinance and expansion of the city. Love the city that we're growing in, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tracy Tonin. I live downtown Crestview, and one of the points brought up is going out at night. I think more pedestrians are going to make it even safer at night. Not everybody who walks out of a bar is stumbling around making comments. Some of them are, you know, there's more people, I think it's a more life in Crestview is going to make it a, even a, more pedestrians are going to bring even a safer downtown. Right now, when my employees leave, we walk them out to the car. We don't just let them go because it's dark out there and things come out of the woods. So, I just think it would be improvement to Crestview to, to open up the more pedestrians, more people, make it safer. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts the list that I have. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Just come on up. And for yourself, residents?
Honorable mayor, council members, my name is Parker Destin. I'm a city councilman in Destin, Florida, so let the record reflect that no South End politicians never came up to say hello to you, so good evening.
And welcome, we welcome you up north.
Thank you for having me. Now, I'm, I'm one of the, one of the folks that my family and I made investments in Crestview many years ago, around 1995, when we were put out of the fishing business. We were caught flat-footed. We had been commercial fishermen from about the 1830s in my family up until the mid 1990s, and when you are overnight told that you can't go fishing anymore, you have to come up with a plan quickly. And what we did was actually made investments in Crestview and started our very first restaurant, and it was actually called the Destin Seafood Market of Crestview and the Fishnet Restaurant, which is on 1260 Salford on Boulevard. It now operates as Emerald Isle Seafood, but we are still very much members of the Crestview community with our businesses. I do tell you that in the very early 90s, there is truth to what some of these people have said, that there was a danger of strangling new investment and that the old ordinance was actually one of the things that worried us the most. We actually worked with, with council members, Hayes' father, and the folks who set up the church behind the O'Reilly Auto Parts to be able to allow us to offer beer and wine along with our restaurant sales, and that was a tremendous help and boost in our sales because that extra 10% made a very big difference when we were in a time of financial struggle. I appreciate all of your attempts and, and work with the faith community to find the, common ground on this issue and, and to be pro-business. So, I commend all of you, I appreciate your efforts, and from one business owner to others, thanks again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I might ask, Mr. Destin, at your business establishment, can you give me an idea of how many people come in your place and got drunk in the side of there?
Not in memory, none.
And nothing reflect on your business, how many people on your, on your, on your estimate estimate would come into a place and buy enough alcohol to get drunk inside of a restaurant? And with the cost of it?
The cost, when, when you're in a restaurant, it does get very expensive, it's not quite the same as going to perhaps Cash's Liquor or, or some other place where you can do it on the cheap. No, it'd be, it's too cost prohibitive usually, and not to mention, we have a responsibility as, as restaurant owners, there's liability that goes in, that you have to cut people off, if they're visibly intoxicated, you, and you continue serving, there's a risk. I, I, I commend you guys to, to carve out the restaurants, because that's the kind of economic growth that I think everybody in, in here is, is seeking, and I'm happy to, to have, to have made it through, even though we had a system that, that was not necessarily nimble enough, I, I'm, I'm happy that we're, we're moving forward in the community.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the city council? Yes, Mr. Mayfield, come on up.
Good evening, I'm John Mayfield, I'm a resident of Crestview, I live on Whitehurst Lane, and I didn't come here tonight about the ordinance, the alcohol ordinance, but I would like to point out that I am in support of it, and my points have been made by various speakers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Yes, sir, come on up.
Hello, my name's Clint Nelson, I am a pastor at LifePoint, I'm extremely nervous to be in front of you guys.
It's alright, don't worry about it.
I live at 515 Gadwell Street, that's in the city, I've been here for about 28 days, and I moved here.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I just wanted to be known, I was, my family was corporate for Applebee's, I bartended for them for many years, and I appreciate the question about how many people go into a restaurant. A lot of business owners know the fact that you don't cut somebody off just when you think that they're intoxicated, so, it's not always a cutoff, if you've ever been cut off, you know that you don't appreciate being cut off, it's not always a direct decision that's made. My request, I'm totally for restaurants, I myself, since moving here, have driven south many times, multiple times, in 28 days, so, but I am not for the, you know, potential for bar after bar after bar after bar. I, I work with students, I've worked with students for the last 15 years, and I just know the opportunity that's there for them. So, my request, whether it carries any weight with you guys or not, is that it would be two different ordinances for the restaurants, maybe not so much the, I'm learning everything as you guys are going through it, but specifically what's happening with the expansion of downtown, the improvement of downtown being included in that. So, that's where I stand, and appreciate you guys, appreciate all your work, I know it's not easy, so, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for including the faith community.
Anybody else like to speak on the alcohol ordinance change? Seeing no one else, I'm gonna close the public portion, bring it back to the council, and, and one of the things, gentlemen, since Cindy's not here tonight, I can say gentlemen, you decided, at one point, we were going to have another workshop, but we felt as though we had covered a lot, and Tim was able to make all the changes you all requested, so, I would like to determine if tonight's meeting, we have a city council meeting, you can have a vote, do we have a consensus to go ahead and bring this to action or not? Do you want me to bring this to action or not?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Sure.
Mr. Blocker? Okay. Okay, hearing that, then I would like action by the council, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I moved to approve ordinance 1730 on first reading, and moved to second reading with the adjustment of the script of the errors noted.
Second. I have a motion, the second, to approve ordinance 1730 on first reading, provided we correct the shiverness errors, and move on to second reading. Any further discussion? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Blocker.
Let me clarify my stand on this. I believe with the research review that has been done with our city attorney, our city manager, all of our elected officials, and many people in this city, that there is a workable, workable solution that we have basically arrived at, and I support, and I'm not anti-business, don't get that wrong, period. I won't that. But alcohol, you mentioned that 90% of some of our people have been here for 100 years, like some of these people have been here 200 years, their dandruff gets up, but legitimately, accurately, and seriousness, we can resolve this, and I believe that the work that our two people especially, our great leaders here for the city of Crestview, has come up with a workable program that everybody can live with. I'm for that, people, but listen, I'm for satisfied, my heavenly father first, and I want you people to know, when you say something, vote your conscience. I vote my conscience, I speak from the heart, what I speak.
Any other discussion? Yes, go ahead, Councilman Menzich.
I definitely see some of the points that have been made when it comes to, to LifePoint and your time within the community. I, I personally don't see the, the extreme of it, and, and just as quickly as we were able to bring this ordinance to pass, there is nothing stopping us at, at later time, if we see the direction going in, in a direction we don't want, that we can revisit topics of this nature. So, I'm gonna be for it.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Prochey.
And I, I, I agree with what you're saying, you can always readdress issues, I, I, I don't, with being here a time, I've been, I don't see it getting worse. I understand that people always wanted to go, I, I'm like somebody, I, I, I go to Niceville, Destin, man, you gotta pay a toll going across the bridge, and it's not worth it for a decent meal for me, so, and Fort Wallon's too long, but, but the reason I say that, people, and you know, I tell you, I tell you about the millenniums in the last meeting, you know, but they don't cook, they still don't cook since last week, but, but they do go out and eat, where's the gentleman that says he's been out, I don't know how many times already? Yeah, he doesn't cook, but they're, we'll, we'll find somebody to cook for him. The reason I, I, I'm in favor of this is that, for a couple reasons, I, we're, we're on the move here. I, I mean, I, I've seen this since I've been here, when I, when I first came back, Crestview was like it was almost when I left, except the businesses had moved elsewhere that were down there, the drugstores, the grocery stores that were downtown, and we're talking early 70s when I left here. And one thing stuck with me, and I talked with a citizen, as, as, I talked with a few citizens on this, and they, they, they all were favorable once I explained it to them, but one, one, the one thing stuck with one gentleman I talked to last week, and I said, because it wasn't, it wasn't as many of you are here, it was a, you know, a small, small part of people here, and I said, man, where are all the people that, you know, they're not giving us any input or anything? He said, they're on their way down to Destin to eat, you know? And, and that stuck with me. There, there, there's some great establishments and food here, you know, I, I was just one other day, and we, we were working at one the other day, and I ate there too, but we, we need more places, if, if we want to retain the people, your, your dollars are going south, and no reflection on Destin.
Don't take it personally.
Destin wants you, wants them, wants y'all to keep coming south, except for Mr. Destin here, which my dad knew, knew quite well. So, that, that, that's why, we, we need the traction here, our young people are, are going down Highway 85 at certain times, and Highway 85 at certain times is really dangerous, and the time that they're going after they get off work or everything like that, is probably a dangerous time, 85, you know, they're working to improve it, but going all the way down to Fort Wallon, it's not necessary them that might do anything, but the people who are going back and forth these paths, you don't know what conditions they're in. So, I, I, I'm all in favor of this, what we're doing, so, everybody knows how I feel about it, if you disagree with me, we can have a friendly conversation, hopefully, and I'll tell you why I feel the way I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hayes? Yes, go ahead, Councilman LaBeauf.
Yeah, I, I wasn't born and raised here, I've been here for 15 years, and one of the reasons why I chose Crestview to put my family here is because of the culture of the city, and we love the culture of this city, and I don't want to change it, but that doesn't mean that we can't take steps forward, which is what I think we're trying to propose here. I don't see the possibility of bar after bar after bar coming to Crestview, if they, even if they did, they wouldn't stay in business, because I don't think there's enough people here to drink to make it worthwhile. But, if that did happen, and I don't say it will, there's nothing that says we can't revisit it, as our, as our councilman here says. You know, anything that we changed today, we can re-change again next week or next month, so if we see this getting out of hand, we can always pull back the reins, there's nothing that says you can't do that, and so that's, that's kind of my point to that. On the 500-foot thing, for me, I think that's a rather arbitrary number, I mean, does that mean that if we put a bar at 501 feet, nothing bad will happen, but at 499, something bad will happen? I, I don't really see that, I think the 500-foot is rather arbitrary, but being a man of compromise, don't stone me yet, okay? Being a man of compromise, I'm willing to compromise and keep it at the 500-foot radius, okay? Again, I don't necessarily personally see that as a problem, but I forego to what the citizens have said. I will tell you that I had two relatives who became alcoholics, okay? But, it wasn't because there was a bar next to the church, had nothing to do with the bar next to the church, they became alcoholics, they were people with poor spiritual faith. Once they saw what it did to their family, and they increased their faith as good Christians, they have not drank since then. It didn't matter where the bar was, they found it no matter where it was, next to a church or not, but once they found the, the Christian spirit and had faith in God, they stopped drinking. And that's what I think we need to be more concerned with than having bars there necessarily drink, I think we need to work on the faith of our citizens to keep that from happening. And, and so with that said, I will say, thank everyone for all the comments, both here and on the street, and on the Facebook, and on the, everything else that I've been hearing from. I do appreciate that, I love that input, it makes me make a more informed decision, and as such, so I too support keeping businesses here, I own a business here as well, has nothing to do with alcohol, we'll never have anything to do with alcohol, but I have a business here as well, and I support keeping our money here, and also making it a place where more people would want to live, work, eat, and potentially drink for those people who need to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Before I call for the vote, let me add in my two cents, I don't get to vote, if you don't know that, I get to chair and not vote, but as we're moving this city forward, I have a lot of confidence in this council, and when they say we're gonna move forward in a cautionary manner, I believe that. I will ask you to review what happened a couple years ago, when we amended some of the restrictions we had on Main Street. People predicted dire consequences for doing that, and nothing, nothing bad has happened on, on Main Street because of that decision. And part of it is because we had the people here to monitor what's going on, and, and be good to their word. So having said that, the motion is to approve ordinance 1370 in first reading and send a second reading with any revisions for the writings on it. All those in po, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Those, those opposed? And the motion carries four to zero with one absent.
Mr. Mayor, one other question, when are we gonna have the second?
We'll have our second reading at the regularly scheduled meeting in November, which I think is, well, it's an odd meeting, so it's the 18th, I believe, is, will be when we have our second reading.
Thank you.
Moving on to section 14, action items, none that we have this evening, and number 15, this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to come up and speak to the city council about anything that's on your mind, it doesn't have to be related to what's on the agenda, it could be you don't like how someone threw your recycle bin down in the driveway or something. Any issue you have, anybody would like to speak to the council at this time?
Push the button on the left.
Besides the other topic we have, we'll call you up separately for that. Feel free to leave if you're, thank you.
You're free to go or stay.
Okay, seeing no one in the audience, we'll move on to comments from the council, I'll start with Councilman LaBeauf, do you have anything for us?
Again, I'd just like to thank everybody for going through this process, I think it was a learning experience for me, remember, I'm the new guy here, so, I think it was a learning experience for me, I really appreciate everyone's patience with us, as we tried to get through this, we had everyone's best interest in mind, and, and I thank my fellow councilmen for, for the support that they gave to this effort as well, thank you.
Councilman Reitzich?
I'm not gonna go too deep in depth in this, because I'm pretty sure the mayor's gonna cover it, but everybody who was able to make it out to Government Week, it was great to see you, and, and give us that feedback so that we can continue to make it better. Thank you.
Councilman Blocker?
My aim, my goal is to please, I said please, you, the public, the citizens of this city, with your help, there's no stopping, period. I appreciate the work, I mean, work and sacrifices that went in to this issue, this hadn't just started in the last three or four weeks, this has been going on for years, but there's been more accomplished in the last 60 days than to have the last 12 years, I know for a fact. We're gonna see great things come, and as a team, you people are my team members, we can do all things, so if you're 413. Mr. Mayor, I want to go back to a question, I've been asked so many times on our item tonight, on our concern of General 10-1, our bills that we pay, we have a bill every month basically from Allen Norton and Blue, but the issue is, most of these discussions, and I asked the question, what nature or method work do they do for our city? What is it? And the number one thing has been for public record issues. Tim, can you tell me what the problem is of people getting to public record issues?
Actually, Allen Norton and Blue was our labor attorney, and so there are very specific laws as it relates to how you release records related to police and law enforcement, and so this had to do with some ongoing law enforcement litigation stuff, and so, at the time, Ms. Roy deferred that to our legal counsel, employee counsel, so, from moving forward, it'll be a part of Mr. Holloway's contract, which I have been wearing him out, and he's probably regretting the deal he cut us, but, so moving forward, you will not see any more bills from Allen Norton and Blue unless there is some sort of reason that, that Mr. Holloway has to engage in.
I'm glad we found something they can do.
He's busy, he told me, puts me on silent.
How you doing, Mr. Blocker?
Yeah.
It's like 9 o'clock at night, and I put him on silent.
Mayor, Mayor Prochey, Champ Hayes, what do you have?
Just a couple things, sir, and, and I, I like to really, that without the attorney, especially with the laws of public, public laws for, for releasing information, we could be in a lot of trouble. There's cities, as I go out through the state, there are cities that are getting sued every week, some attorneys, some attorneys are just doing, throwing it out there because they get fees whether they win or not, but that, that's a big issue here in the state of Florida, it's taking, taking different actions on that. A couple things, Mr. President and the council, I was at the TCPI, which is Tri-County Pardon Initiative, Initiative, meeting last week, I'm, I sit on the board there, and this is dealing with, for the people who might not know, this is where we work with Eglin to help Eglin, and in turn try to get help from them on different things, and it was quite interesting, some of the things that came up in the last meeting, one, one thing that it might be good for our citizens to know, that there's a shortage, shortage of trade people down at Eglin, right now, they, there's 90 positions that are open, basically people in carpentry, training like that, they're, they're looking for people, as we know, or might not know, there's a, a great shortage of trained skilled people in our area, and they're going outside to get them, and that's why our public schools and need to work on that, and our city manager, I is gonna be talking with some things concerning that at a later time. They talked about next gen Eglin, and it's, still, the, the, Eglin, you know, they had to prepare, they're preparing for the future, Eglin's... And it's, uh, still, the, the, the Eglin, you know, they had to prepare, they're preparing for the future. Eglin's not going to go down any. Um, they're, they're getting more and more missions to complete. And right now, what they're running into in, in Eglin right now is mainly a housing, uh, shortage. Uh, they have 160 families on the waiting list right now. Uh, rental property is going up. The, uh, one factor is doing to the hurricane. Others that because people are moving here and they don't have a lot of affordable housing. The B A Q or whatever they get sometimes is a meeting what they have to pay. Um, just to give you an example, they say some of the property in Niceville is, uh, they're billing houses of $230 a square foot. Can you believe that? Yeah. Uh, somebody recently bought a lot in Hammet Bay, for the ones who know that, $90,000 for a lot in Hammet Bay. Uh, what's happening is that more and more people are moving this way. As I told you before, there's over 1,000 people moving to Florida every day. I for quarters when the main, main build and others, they're billing and they're looking west. So that means they're coming that way. You can't stop them. All we can do is try to be prepared for them. Right now, uh, they said there's about 30,000 cars that come through Eglin every day through the gate. Um, only 3,000 of them live on, on, on the installation. So you know they're not on the installation, those 27,000 other cars. I think every one of them comes to Crestview on 85, you know? But, uh, that's just information that we, we as a city need, we, we need to keep looking forward. Because the growth's coming this way, people. Only thing we could do as, as members of that is try to prepare for it. Uh, we, we got caught in a thing where, where we didn't see the future. And if I could see the future, I'd go play the lottery tomorrow, you know, but I can't do that. But I can try to make it, get, get us prepared for the next generation. Eglin's getting prepared for it. There, um, there's more and more people coming this way. And so if you think Crestview's going to stay, uh, like it was when I left here in 70 with 6,000 people, those days are long gone. Let's prepare for it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And the, uh, the only remarks I have, and, uh, and as you kind of alluded to it, and that is during City Government Week, uh, it went very, very well. On Monday, uh, we recognized in numerous clubs and organizations in the city that support us, brought them all in, let them, uh, talk to the public and thanked them for what they do. On Tuesday, the library hosted, uh, free pancakes over there. And then they allowed us to go in and check in and check out books. And they'll never do that again.
That's hard work.
We created quite a backlog over there, but, but that was, uh, it was a lot of fun. On Wednesday, now, we had a Q and A, uh, live on Facebook with all the elected officials and, uh, city managers were available. And, um, we didn't think it would last for two hours, but it did. It, uh, after two hours, people were putting in comments, questions or whatever. It went, went very, very well. On Thursday, we took some downtime and did a, uh, team, teamwork amongst ourselves. We had some briefings from our HR manager, then we had something to eat, and then we played games. But in addition to the games, we, uh, collected some, uh, canned goods or, uh, things to take over to our homeless shelter. And we collected almost 800 items just in that afternoon, so that was a great day. And then on, uh, Friday, we went over and we bussed tables over at Desi's Restaurant. And again, uh, uh, Tim's not going to invite us back because of all the broken dishes, but, but we, but we, we, we really had a lot of fun interfacing with the people. All 500 or 600 of them did show up in that two-hour block. And then, of course, we know that the Fall Festival was postponed. It'll be, uh, on the, uh, 2nd of November now, next Saturday. And, uh, it is a fall festival. It's not strictly Halloween, so you don't have to be in a costume if you don't want to be. But Bill, you can wear a costume if you want to. But anyway, uh, we know kids will show up in costume anyway, but it's going to be a great event. We had to move it a week because of the winds and the rain. Uh, it'll be from 1 until 6 here on Main Street. But before that, if you don't know what disc golf is, and I didn't know until probably six months ago. Uh, we're going to have a demonstration at Northview Park starting at 11:00 AM. Uh, come on out. There'll be some simulated, uh, baskets up there and some professionals teaching you how to play the game. Um, I'll be there trying to play the game, I guess. I don't know, but anyway. Make sure you join us for that. All right, so, uh, yeah.
We'll make a correction, so people won't quote me erroneously. Uh, the 160 housing families, that's in Herbert now. Eg, Eglin still has the same, but they, I didn't get the number for Eglin, but that, that's at Herbert Field, uh, where there's 160. And Mr. Blocker, did you hear me now?
Got it.
All right.
You hear it immediately.
All right, okay. The, uh, did, uh, city clerk leave anything for you to report for?
No, sir. She just asked me not to mess up. I'm trying.
Well, tell her, no, I was going to say.
You need to be a bad guy.
Okay, uh, Mr. Holloway, our attorney, what do you have for us?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Now we go back to the city manager. Put him in the hot seat one more time.
Okay, um, so real quick, just on items that are not, uh, uh, going to be of a whole lot of, um, controversy or issue or whatever. Uh, one other thing I did want to mention, next week, uh, or at the next council meeting, we're going to have a presentation from Trey Dooley, our planner, on our North Okaloosa Transportation Task Force. Um, I've told him that I need him to provide all the answers to all the transportation problems in Okaloosa County. Uh, no, but really, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting. He's put, he's going to do a presentation for us to show what we're doing, um, through, uh, not only the city, but also Okaloosa County and, uh, planning and engineering. It's actually a really cool, he warned me out about it at the very beginning. I didn't think he could get, that we would get a whole lot of buy-in, but they've got a lot of buy-in. So, uh, we've got members of the DOT involved. We've got, um, Okaloosa County's engineers and planners, our engineers and planners, all talking at the same time about the same issue. So we're, we're excited about where that's going, and so we'll be, we'll be doing that at the next meeting. Um, I figured we had a big audience, so I'd announce it. All right, the next item that we have for you is, uh, from time to time in the position I'm in, obviously, people bring things to my attention that they think are a great idea, uh, for the city. Sometimes they are, um, and sometimes, uh, the idea is big enough that it's something that I need to bring before you as a council. Um, and this is, this is one of those, uh, times. We have been approached by Central Baptist Church, uh, to allow us the opportunity of a first right of refusal to acquire the, um, the Rock property, um, or the, the property that's known as The Rock. And, uh, what I'd like to do, I've got some pictures of it. I'm going to walk you through. Um, then we'll call up, uh, the representative from the church to speak a little bit on it. And then I'd like to speak, um, kind of on where we are, um, what, what I'm thinking about this. So, uh, first of all, this is the facility. It's located, it's located all the way over behind, um, Central Baptist Church. And we'll watch this video, uh, and then, um, we'll talk a little bit more. If you can't see it, you'd like to move over. Just come on down. Here's another view of it. There is a small stage inside there. Um, from my understanding from the church, it would include all of the bleachers, all of the, um, parts and pieces that you see inside there. The covers for the floor, that kind of stuff. Um, there was, there are volleyball nets and the ability to do volleyball. Uh, there are the inserts in the center line of the floor, uh, for the mounts for the volleyball net. Um, this is the racquetball court, um, which is directly connected to or right off, off the basketball court. Um, there is a full kitchen, um, which, uh, you know, um, is something that we do not currently have in the city. Um, I'm not, you know, sure, uh, other than maybe at the community center, what our need for a good full kitchen is. But, um, this is a nice one. They serve quite a bit out of there. Rumor has it they served lunch after the hurricane. Is that a thing? I think that's right. Somebody told me that. Um, but, um, it's a full-size kitchen or, or a full-service kitchen, um, really in good shape. Uh, this, this is where they do their feeding. Um, it's a, the front area. If anybody, the chamber actually used to meet in this building, is my understanding.
The basketball court used to be where we used to have our breakfast.
Okay, um, so there, there is a, a small area here, or it's not small, it's as big as this room is at least, this front area, um, where they, where you can have seating and tables. And there is, uh, one of the things they do have as a part of the kitchen, uh, that was pretty, it's not in any of these pictures, but there is a, uh, pass-through window for concessions and things like that for the basketball court. So, um, again, this is, uh, uh, something that has, was not something we planned on, um, but it did come, uh, they did bring it to my attention. Uh, they, the asking price for this right now is at 1.399 million. Um, that, that's their asking price. Uh, I'll allow, or I would like for, uh, not allow, but I would like for, um, the representative from the church to get up and speak a little bit about it if you guys want to. Um, and, and then, uh, we can kind of continue to talk about, uh, what we think our options are and what we're, what our point of today's conversation is.
Hey, Brett House, I'm a member of Central Baptist Church, and, uh, we just thought it would be a, a good opportunity for the city to have a, a place right there in the city, walking distance for a lot of neighborhood. Be able to walk over, um, play basketball in an air-conditioned gym. So, uh, we signed my boy up for, uh, for basketball this year, and we don't have an air-conditioned gym yet. Um, kitchen, dining, racquetball, workout area, the whole, basically, most of that block there, there's two houses that are not included in that block, but the majority of the block. There's some grassy area where the hut is. It has some room to expand for more parking or more buildings or whatever in the future. All right. Questions?
Did I call the asking price correctly?
A million 395.
Okay, I was close.
Any questions, Mr. House?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr.
Yeah, a couple, couple of questions.
Okay.
Where, where's your parking there? It appears pretty limited there.
We're right up in the front there, where, uh, where the photo's taken from. This is parking lot. It goes from the street to the building, so it's, uh, quite a large space.
Yeah, no, no, I, because I, I didn't get a chance to go over there. How many, how many, uh, I don't know about the ladies, but for the men's, how many stalls do you have for the, for, for males over in that area?
Um, we have, uh, I think, six showers on each side for the men and the women. It's a mirror image from each side. So there's two bathrooms with lockers, and they have showers. And then in the eating area, there's two, a man and a, and a women's bathroom.
Okay, and how far is your seating capacity in there? Do you know that?
Uh, we have the, the mats to put on the gym floor, so you can cover up the maple floor and put chairs and tables, and it's, I mean.
No, no, I mean, your, your seating capacity.
Seating capacity for fire.
I, I know I saw some bleachers on one side and a stage on the other.
Right.
Was it just one set of bleachers or were there more extended down there?
Two, two sets of bleachers on one side.
Okay. Okay, that's, um, it's like, uh, 1.395?
A million 395.
Almost 1.4.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Blocker.
I was a member, Southside Baptist Church, on the conception of this facility. I was also chairman of the building committee on this facility. I know at inch by inch, you can't beat it for the money. Where is it located? Heart of the city? Accessible. A few years back, the county made comments they wanted to purchase it. But the Lord had better use at that point in time. But this has been a great idea that several people over the last 15 years have mentioned. Why don't the city buy yours this rock? They didn't have an opportunity. But now that's available.
Yes.
I know the facility, in and out. It's worth the money.
Any questions?
Any other questions, comments?
I don't have any questions. My comments are not from, from Brett. Hey.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, so, so where, where this leaves us is, uh, and, and I'm, I mean, I'm sure we, we'll want to open up because we took names, uh, to, to the public if they'd like to speak. But, uh, you know, from a staff's perspective, this is a great facility. Um, there is, there is some great opportunity there. Um, what I wanted to get from you all before I said either yes, we'll, we'll do a bunch of work to pursue it, or no, uh, we're not going to, is I needed to get a consensus. This is a policy decision. Um, you guys and you all engaged me to run the daily operation of the city. I present to you a budget. That budget gets adopted. You hand down policy to me through things like the strategic plan and things like that, and we implement the policy day in and day out. When we have something that, like this that comes up, that is a deviation from that, it, it really, it, it goes to you all. Um, my, again, I think that the gymnasium itself has, has great value to us. I have concerns about the pool as a public pool, um, because, not that it couldn't be used as a lap pool, but the outcry for a pool here in Crestview, uh, seems to be surrounded around. They want to take their little kids down there to swim and, and that kind of stuff. And it's, um, you know, it's, it's very well-suited for, for laps, um, not as well-suited for necessarily just being a public pool. There's some seating areas. We'd have to push the fence out. There's some elevation issues in the front to, to create. But you, you could create bleachers. You could create events there. But I think it's important that we focus on, you know, is that what? But I think it's important that we focus on, you know, is that what we're looking at for a pool? So the gym is, is definitely good. The kitchen equipment is very good. The, you know, the racquetball, you saw in the pictures. The, the building needs some work. Had I known they were gonna do a drone, I wouldn't have dragged Pastor Mixon up there on the roof with me to look around. But I've been on the roof. It definitely needs to be coated, the air conditioners. One air conditioner looks to be fairly new. The rest of the air conditioners have some age on them, it appears. And they can definitely correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, at, at that, at that price, so that we have a general idea. They spend in the neighborhood of about twenty thousand a year in utilities between the water bill and the electric bill for that gym as it sits right now. The, the payment for, for this, we, we've done preliminary looks. We're in the process of looking at financing, so we did some preliminary looks. We're looking at about a 200,000 to 225,000 dollar a year annual payment. In addition to what the money that we're already going to have to borrow for the bypass and some other things. And so, just to give you an idea, it's about a 225, 200,000 to 225,000 dollar a year payment. And so tho- those are some of the things that you all will need to take into account, or we need to take into account. The other thing I would like to say is, you know, timing, timing is kind of everything. I, I would like to have our recreation strategic plan put together as we go to make big decisions like this, so that we can make sure that we know what we're prioritizing. If we choose to do this, it is a general fund expenditure of not less than 200,000 dollars a year in our current budget.
For how many years?
For, that, that would be in a ten year, that's in a ten year loan. So if we went, if we went, Gene, is that correct? Okay, yeah, that's adding it on to the current financing we're working at. You could go longer and drop the payment if we wanted to. But I think that there are, we would want to, if you task me to move forward, I'm gonna tell, come back with, you know, not just the purchase price, but also what improvements we would need to make initially to the property. But I, I just want to make sure that as we look at it, we, we know that, right now, we're not sure, we haven't set priorities for recreation. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. I, I would be happy to answer any questions. And I think we open it up and we give them another opportunity to speak as well.
Any questions before, yeah, go ahead.
Tim, I know we're working through some of the financing side, but is that a ten year lock? And, and have we figured out what those actual rates are gonna be locked in on that?
Oh, no, we're not locked on the rate yet. We feel pretty confident about the rate.
But it'll be fixed, or is it?
Yes, yes, for the, for the life of a lot. I thought you meant, have we locked the rate right now? No. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
How soon are you expecting to have your recreation plan? You said that's what you would like to get done first. Where is that in the?
Right, we would do, we, we anticipate doing strategic planning in January. You know, we've done the cities. We, we've done the CRAs. I, I know that Chief McCosker wants to do it. He'll be doing it in the police department. We, the recreation is really the next one that we'll do on a bigger scale. We'll hold it at, I've, I've, we've been working with staff, they're collecting a bunch of information for us. Statistics, who plays what games, how much, how much, what revenue does that bring in? How much do we spend on uniforms? All of those things are things that, you know, we need to compile in order to do that. So that took a little bit of time. In, so sometime right after the first of the year, we would hold a meeting on a Saturday. So you'll all, we'll, we'll know that's coming. Where we can bring the public out, because it's something we're definitely, you know, I hear about it all the time. A lot of people on Facebook have a whole lot of opinions about it. I want us to talk about it with all the information in front of us.
Because I think one of the most important inputs, at least for me, are on this building, is, is what are we gonna use it for? You know, it might be a great price, might be a great facility, but if we don't have the plans in place to actually utilize it effectively, you're kind of spending money for no, for no purpose. And I understand, that's why I was trying to get it when you're doing a recreation. Along with that, how soon are they looking for a decision from us? What kind of timetable, Brett, are you looking for, from us to, to sell? I mean, is this like a quick sale thing, or you?
We have, we have, even a timeline, yeah.
Okay. Because again, you understand my question there. I mean, if they're willing to wait for us to do our thing in January, you know, or if they're like, well, I gotta, we want to sell it today, well, then that's a different, that's a different beast. So that was kind of my question there.
One thing I would like to add also, I did have brief informal conversations with, right now, the, the pool, the, the facility is used by Rocky Bayou Christian School. They have an interest in working with us on a lease to continue to use that property. Should we end up acquiring it, I absolutely think that is a wise thing for us to do. The, the hours that they're there are not the hours that, you know, I mean, it would be, I want to maximize the use of the property. And certainly any return we could make on it. So we would, we would absolutely pursue that as an option.
You need to make it cost effective, use versus what's the cost.
So that is, that is an opportunity for revenue, you know, to go towards that payment, or those payments, whatever they might be. That's all.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, look at this right here, I just want, for my, I want to make sure. The property lines go all the way to the street, I guess that's going south, is it? Or is I, I can't see that, whatever that.
No, it says facing the top of the screen, I believe, right? The south is on the bottom of the screen.
Alright, there, there are the parcels.
Okay.
This, the, the parcel on the bottom here is not included. This parcel is not included. This is, I guess, right away or something. But the, all of the, be a part of it, and all of this would be a part of it. So it would be all of this parking, in the building, and the pool, and the hut.
And that other property, if we decide to go that way, is our, so we'd be open to whatever.
The stuff in the middle, you mean?
Yeah. You know, the pool, the pool is a minor thing with me, because I know there's no way you can use that as a city pool. So it would be just mainly the structure, the, the pool. And with, since you mentioned Rocky Bayou, that, that, you know, but for the city pool, we, we, I would need to think about considering. So the pool's almost irrelevant to me right now. It's just happened to be there, which is good for, in my opinion, senior citizens or the Rocky Bayou Club, baby, baby training for something like that. But it would never accommodate a city pool.
But it's better than what we have now.
True.
We have a river, three of them. But, but anyway, that, 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 that was, like I said, a pool that really doesn't play a factor in that. And the people I talked with, you know, they say it would never work as a, I've talked with about, probably about seven or eight, it would never work on that. As far as the other part of it, I, I, I can see going and investigating it further. That's it.
Alright, before we, before we go into whether we have a consensus or not, I'd like to take public input. And right now, I have two individuals signed up that would like to speak. I'll begin with Mr. Corey Schroder. I gave you three minutes, Corey.
Alright, good evening, everyone. My name's Corey Schroder. I am a city resident. I have a business in town. Full disclosure, I really didn't know what I was gonna say tonight. I wanted to kind of hear more information about the sale. What caught my attention last Thursday is when this came up on social media, and I saw the word pool. And like I said, full disclosure, two things. One, I thought, okay, we get a pool, and then maybe my wife won't bug me, bug me as much about getting a pool at the house.
No, that won't, that won't work. Trust me, that won't work.
But, and two, I saw the word gym getting thrown out there, but, because obviously I own a gym business, but this gymnasium and gym are two different things. Then I started looking at it from an investment standpoint. Personally, a lot of the comments that I got involved in on social media were around the word pool. And I know you mentioned that it's not so much a community pool. A lot of people saw the word pool, and they were all for it on social media. And what it reminded me of is I have a fifteen year old son right now, who's gonna be driving here about April. He sends me cars all the time he sees online. He sent me a 2003 Mustang, paint's faded on it, it's 2,500 dollars. That's a great deal, because he saw a Mustang. And, and that's what I thought that I was seeing from the, the community. Personally, I love the direction I'm seeing the community go. I love the, the momentum with the skate park, the frisbee golf. I'm from Indiana, and frisbee golf is huge, and it's gonna be a great. I think one of the comments I saw in the news story was that we'd have to find funding. And I think if we're at that point, and we see the activity on social media saying we want a pool, then let's keep the momentum or go with some of the different things that we're already planning, and put this in a strategic plan to build a community pool later on, that is better suited for what we need. Now, this is a great building, that video does wonders. And it is a good investment for maybe a private business to turn that into something. But once again, the, the momentum on social media was over the pool. And if people were thinking, community pool. So that is, that need is there, that want is there. I just think if we're gonna find money, let's, let's fix them, let's take the little money we have, because, sorry, but 1.04 million dollars is a lot of our tax dollars, a lot of our money. When we can fix the AC at the basketball courts we have now, we can put it into some more of these smaller projects, like the skate park and like the frisbee golf, and plan for that bigger community pool. That might cost us two or three million dollars down the road, but it will be better suited for our community. That's all I had, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayfield, you're next.
Alright, good evening again, I'm John Mayfield, I'm a resident of Crestview. And, yeah, as you said, I was one of those first, a pool. I wish I'd known this pool was in the city a long time ago, I would have made use of it. I've been swimming for fifty-five years, give or take a couple of days. I'm still a lifeguard. I've been lifeguarding, I've lifeguarded in pools that look exactly like that, uses community pools. They do work, however, looking at it on the map, I would have some questions about it being a community pool. Just because of the ability, the deck space, and the ability to expand to actually meet the needs of the community. I do agree, a pool is something that we need. They are expensive, expensive to maintain. And if we can, if we end up going forward to this, it was mentioned a partnership, keeping a partnership with the church. If we can do that, make it available to the community, it would be a great thing for us. But whether this is the right property or not, I do have some questions about it as far as the pool, pool is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak on this topic? Anybody else in the audience want to speak on this topic? Come on up there.
The Rock is a great place.
You need to give us your name and address, please.
Oh, Anganata Patterson, and I do, I am a Crestview citizen, 426 Benjamin Street. And I just want to say, The Rock is a good place. My, my grandkids, that's where all, half of them learned how to swim, at The Rock. So the pool is good, and if the city was to purchase, maybe they could get somebody to teach swimming lessons or something. Because all of my kids learn how to swim, well, half of my grandkids, which I got like thirty, they learn how to swim at The Rock, for real. And it is a wonderful place. It is, that's all I have to say, I just want to say that.
Thank you, ma'am.
And when they said about that pool, it was like, oh, is the city gonna get that? Are we gonna be able to swim there again? But that's a good, it is good, if we could, if the city could do that, and teach swimming lessons.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else from the public like to speak on this topic? Could, I'm not sure Mr. House would be answering, either him or Pastor Mixon, but I have a question, one of you would come back up here, please. We don't normally like to speak to people in the audience.
I like the way he threw you under the bus, real quick.
Oh, my time's up. We in this timer, man, we need that.
No, Reverend, I'm gonna give you a sermon now. You know what, Tim shared with us the, the operating costs on an ongoing basis for utilities. My question to you would be, what does your church normally spend for upkeep and maintenance on a monthly basis? Would you raise a microphone, too, please?
It's a great question.
I know, that's why I asked you.
Probably better to have a little time to get that together to bring to you. I can, I mean, I know what we pay for different things, but to lump together on maintenance, we don't divide out their time. So we have one full-time maintenance person, and we have a, a full-time helper, but she volunteers. And so there's no cost associated with her help payroll-wise. The pool, we pay Johnson and Johnson. Right now, we pay them a monthly service to come and keep up with the chemicals and keep the pool pretty. And that's a, that's an easier task. When it first got there, we were doing it in-house. And chemicals were costing us more than it's costing us now to hire a service to do that, because they can keep things right. Few years ago, we spent about 15,000 dollars repairing air conditioning units, and replacing air conditioning units. But most of that is, is in-house work. Some of that, we had to hire companies to, to come in and do some of that. Yeah, anything more specific that I've missed?
No, no, I'm just looking in general, because you always, have you say redoing the gym floor? That, that's usually a pretty expensive.
Sure, redoing the gym floor. We do it about every other year. We utilize a gentleman out of Alabama that does a lot of our schools, a lot of universities in the state of Alabama. And he's charged us 1,800 dollars both times. And that's for him to come in, strip it, and redo the floor.
I've been there, and y'all do a great job, you really do. I mean, it looks really good. Alright, I just, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine. It was built in 1997. It was money donated by, the majority won contributor, and then several others that came in as part of the church and gave towards it. The, the gentleman that gave the majority of the funds, he had a, a vision for reaching the community in that area. And I had a chance multiple times to go and sit down with him, and, and just hear what the vision was that he had. It was a great time together. And, and I feel like even, even with the city being the owner, if that were the way we went, it would still be in the process. Now, I do want to tell you that we have intentions as a church to, to, to build a facility close, close to where we are now, on the same side of the street, because that street has become very busy. And having people, kids mostly, walk to and from there is, is quite a challenge. And so eventually, we would build on the same side. A couple rumors to dispel that I've heard is, is the city needs to help the church, because financially, it's not there. And thankfully, we're in no debt whatsoever. And so at the grace of God, we're able to minister the way that we do, and so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I do have a question for you, not to put you on the spot, but actually, yeah, to put you on the spot. So, so you've heard my comments. What, do, do you guys have a time, have you talked about a timeline that you need a decision? Or is it, do you, do you know?
So the timeline that I took to the church in the business meeting, when we had the meeting to discuss, we had a workshop, and then we had the meeting a couple of weeks later to discuss selling The Rock. We, we had very preliminary talked, and you had voiced that there would be something that would need to happen before the first of the year. And so that's what I took to the church. So I, I haven't gone back to the elders or to the church to change anything with that, yet.
Right, which, which is based on, which was based on using the financing that we just talked about.
Right.
And so, so that, for, for, so that we're on the same page. If we, I, my, my position on it right now is that that's probably not the best even financing option for us, because of the, the payment and operating costs, and having no idea what those will be. So we would probably, if, if through planning, strategic planning, I mean, if you all tell me to go find the money tomorrow, that's exactly what I'll do, let's be clear on that. But how to pay for it, I don't know, if we're gonna have to take, draw straws or something. But anyway, I'm joking. But my preference is for us to go through our strategic planning. If it prioritizes, then we look at a longer range financing, where we actually finance some improvements into the buildings and things like that. And so, you know, there, there's a couple of options, they, if, if the timeline, they can put it, they, they've been gracious, and I appreciate coming to us first. That, that was, that was very, very nice of you all. And, go ahead.
Permissible to respond to that?
Sure, yeah.
Didn't know if I needed to approach the bench, or, okay. So coming to the city was for the idea of being able to partner down the road. You know, every Monday, we have our soup kitchen that feeds many, I think last year, we gave away a little over 30,000 pounds of food. So there's a lot of activity that goes on, and we have to relocate a lot of that. But we did give a different price to the city as well. I, I know what we've listed it as.
I didn't want to share that publicly.
But we did, we did share a different price with the city, for the idea of future things. And that's not the church taking on the idea that, well, later, we can come to you and say, hey, we need to use your building now. And we gave you a discount. No, we would rent it just like anyone else would. But the location would allow us to rent it when we needed it. And so, so there is an income base now, in our current budget, that we do make some funds for renting it. But that's not the primary goal, and so we don't utilize that and advertise it in such a way that it covers expenses.
But would that, would that be made available to us?
The, the budget of?
Yeah, of what your income is now to the individual.
Sure, sure, sure.
Again, because that's another factor that could contribute to, can we can afford the monthly and the annual payments? Is if they have contracts, that we could, we could of course keep going, then that would be some source of income to help us relieve us of some of the.
So we probably rent for, well, we definitely rent for much cheaper than, than other city facilities that are available now. So I'm sure there'd be some change within that. But with zero advertisement, last year, it was around 25,000, with, with no advertisement. We don't, we don't reach out or say, hey, come rent The Rock.
Yeah, go ahead.
Look, look at your picture, I, I know I see one house there, I, I don't know if there is any, any more next to, next to your church, right there?
It is growing up, isn't it?
Okay, so it's basically one, two, basically two houses that are adjacent to the church?
Right.
Okay. Now, have you, have you talked to your neighbors concerning what you, I think you don't have to.
So the one to the southwest, on the bottom left, that's a rental, that's in a life estate from a family right across the street. The one on the southeast side, that's Ms. Posey, she and I talked to. Um, she and I talked about it Sunday afternoon and, um, and she, I, I wanted her to know what we were doing and we happened to see each other and so it was a good, good conversation.
No problems with it?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Did you say, did you say that, um, after the first of the year is, is an option or no?
So I need to take that back to our leadership.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, Mr. Blocker, go ahead.
Oh, let me ask you one question.
Not so fast.
Clarify the property from the hood house to Lee Street. Is that in part of this parcel?
It is.
That's what I was doing.
Where the large oak tree is?
That's correct. Said on it many times. What I would like to see the city do is to see and learn the feasibility and potential, whether or not we could do that. And for making a multi-purpose building, we need something for our children, our adults and all to do. But this is just another one of them things.
Okay.
But I was concerned about the property on over to Lee Street.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, with the local swim teams, you know, Crestview High School doesn't have a swim team, but Rocky Bayou does. So they drive up from Niceville to practice there. To be able to host a meet, you have to have more deck space. So our solution to that, that we were looking into doing was just west of the pool extending out the deck and then carrying the entrance way rather than where it is adjacent to the building or in line with the building, carrying it down further south, um, just at those double doors.
Right.
So that would give a lot more deck space.
This way here.
Right, yes, sir.
All right.
All right, thank you.
You said a tree included on the property.
Sir.
Yeah, the big tree.
The trees included, yes, sir.
Get to keep the big tree. It's gorgeous, right?
Okay, uh, what are you looking for the council? What are you looking for, for the council?
Well, um, what, what would be beneficial to me is to know whether or not, um, you want me to continue to put staff time to this to try to, um, come up with financing and a, and a business plan for it alone? Or do we want to, um, let them go ahead and get it on the market and then we do our strategic planning and then if it's still up there, circle back to it? Those are really kind of our two, I, I don't want to drag them out and I don't want to waste staff time either if we. It's, it, right now, for us to do this, it is a policy decision. It's, it thinks we, we will be making, think we will not be doing things if we choose to do this is, is why it's important that you all.
Really, really have three options. Don't pursue it at all.
Right.
Pursue it right now or wait till that's strategic planning.
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing. Okay. Okay, Councilor LaBeaufort, what's, what's your feeling of those three?
How are we going?
Wait a minute, I just called on Councilor LaBeaufort.
Personally, I'd like to wait until after we have a plan for the place.
Okay.
After we have some sort of an idea. Because again, it's a great building and great property, but there's a lot of great buildings and great properties around town. But if we don't have a plan that makes it useful, what's the point? So I would like to have the plan first. I know, I realize that puts a, a bind on the church. They're trying to wait for us to get our act together, but that's my preference.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Redditch?
I would lean towards the church going and placing the property on the market. Uh, I've grunched the numbers. It, it definitely on the real estate side looks more of like a pri- private play than a public play. Um, there's other properties within our community or very close vicinity to our community that for that amount of money, even at the discounted price, we can acquire. Uh, I, I don't even know the multiple, but one point four acres, we'd be getting way more than that. And there's already a pool and a lot of other things. So I think strategic planning is a must before we make any big muscle movements, especially at this dollar amount.
Councilor Blocker, your thoughts?
I just would like to know the feasibility first.
Okay. All right, Councilor Nation?
I need to say plan.
All right, I think you're hearing it loud and clear.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, there was never going to be a vote. We just wanted to contest this, whether we wanted him to immediately pursue it or, uh, it looks like pursue it after you develop a strategic plan. Whatever they have to do, they will have to do.
Right, right. I think, I think what we do is, is, you know, thank them and, and then, uh, we will, as, as long as it's on the market, we'll continue to talk about this as a component of strategic planning. We'll, we'll reach out, I'll reach out to their offices and get some numbers on rentals and other maintenance expenses and that kind of stuff. And we'll, we'll, just like all the rest of the data we collected for strategic planning, I'll have a good option for you on this. Okay.
Okay, good. All right, I think we've conducted, uh, all of our business very productively. I, I do want to, uh, recognize our media in the back, back of the room. They, uh, they come over here and they cover our city council meetings, Crestview News Bulletin, Crestview Community TV. Uh, they come over here and they don't charge us to do that. It's news to them. And they spread the word and we appreciate them being here. We appreciate all of you being here this evening. And say no further business. This meeting is adjourned. Yeah, considering we have.